Any discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael, we have anybody online?
Josh, do you have anybody online?
One person, Jane Johnson.
Jane, have anything to say before we go to the people who are here? Not waving our hand?
Not waving our hand.
Anybody else have it? It looks like everybody else is here for a purpose of the public info, so we'll get right to the agenda. Mary, how you doing? Welcome.
Jason, my, um, here is because we have, uh, two, uh, room members. Is selectmen okay then? Uh, for the museum?
Did you vet them thoroughly? Did you, did you do a thorough background check?
Did you do a background check? Oh. Well, didn't need to.
Oh, even better.
I've known Judy Berry ever since she was like this. And Ed Reed has been around here for quite some time.
Great. All right, anybody else have any comment? Okay. I make the motion to appoint Ed Reed and Judy Berry to the Swansea Municipal Committee.
I'll second that.
I guess you know them. You want to be sure they know they, they, they have your support.
Would you, would you prefer?
He hasn't voted on it yet.
Oh.
I just decided I wanted to move the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you very much. We're all set, Mary. Thank you. You're all set.
Yep.
Back in the cold.
Be careful on the ice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sewer Commission Chair Larry Crowder, how we doing?
Good.
He's gonna go to the guest of honor chair.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, Larry.
Gentlemen?
Nice to see you.
Okay, um, budget, sewer commission. Um, this is the, this is the first year that we've done a budget since we hired a private operator, which is WSL plus. So it was a little, um, maybe there's just a lot of line items to deal with and so forth. And so having done that, where we are is, um, with North Swansea, proposed budget is an increase of five point seven six percent. Um, and most of that is due to, well, a lot of it in the north is, is due to electricity and the other part of it is due to contract operation. Where we spread out the contract operations is officially divided by two thirds for west and a third for north. So bump north up just a little bit. So that's part of the increase. West Swansea, proposed budget has an increase of nine point eight one percent. And the biggest part of that, you can probably see if you have a budget sheet, but it's, is electricity, obviously. I mean, we spent, what did you say, twenty-five thousand?
It was twenty-five, now we're projecting thirty-seven.
So that was a big portion of the West Swansea increase. And then the other portion was testing the chemicals, um, which obviously both have gone up. We have one that would come in and test, uh, sampling of several times a year. And obviously the price of chemicals have gone up. And then the North Swansea path, pass through with users, um, it's up seven point four, one, seven point one four percent. And basically we added a line item for maintenance and improvement. So we've never had that before, but if you're not familiar with this, this is the, um, Matthews Road sewer name that goes through Keen's lines and also the, um, Cool Can Market Basket from the Swansea High to Market Basket. That portion of the sewer is in pretty good shape. We've never really cleaned Matthews Road from Swansea lines to the north. So we're thinking about doing that next year. So it, it's a good thing to have in there. We haven't done it, uh, we haven't had any problems there, but it's to the maintenance purpose.
How, how often do you recommend doing that?
Making sewer mains depends on main, but we there's a, there's a formula out there, but for me, there's places like you should, we try to clean, we, we appropriate X amount of money every year to do so many feet. But all of our pipe is, it's all SGL thirty-five for most of the system. We've had one sewer shortage in fifteen years in North Swansea. Scott checks the manholes and if we see a problem, we will, we will address it and have it cleaned. But, um, it's a hard number because we don't have, we don't have a big grease problem because it's not, there's not a lot of restaurants that are in that system. Restaurants like Keen's under areas of grease buildup. So part of that equation is, is the use and, and what you see in your main when you look in it. And as we're always pretty darn clean, but it's, we still should do like twenty percent of our mains per year.
So every five years?
Roughly, yeah, it would be a good five to seven years.
I mean, in that five-year period, all the, all the lines are clear?
Yeah.
All of it serviced?
Yeah, we have five miles of main in north, so you get a mile a year, which is probably around two thousand dollars a day to do that. It's probably even more, yeah, that's, that's a pretty good number, just for budget purposes. And, um, this, we don't anticipate a rate increase for this budget. Um, you see dollars have money left over in a budget, but I will caution everyone that a rate increase is probably going to be necessary in West Swansea within the next several years because we're looking at, well, you guys will be, I'm a length up here, you guys will be taking it over. But we're looking at, you know, a significant increase in the, upgrading the plant. We're talking millions. So right now we're okay, but I don't think we're saving enough money. I think in the future we'll talk about that and try and, I don't think we've had a rate increase in West Swansea in thirty years, which obviously everything else has gone up and we kind of wiggle away all the way through all this. But, um, time is coming for west to, and, and west has some of the cheaper sewer rates in state. So the time is coming to really look at west seriously because the other part is we're getting close to not flow-wise capacity, but treatment-wise capacity. And we're due for a new permit, who knows? We're doing it day now, that could be five years now. But if they add more testing for different types of things, um, then we're gonna have to up the plant, upgrade the plant to treat for whatever they want. Right now we're treating pretty much as phosphorus as they're getting back. So that's just food for thought coming down the road, but it's, you know, you're talking about, I'm gonna, at least a three million dollar upgrade.
What do we have in reserves now? What do we have in reserves now?
We, we have two different accounts. We have one for west and one for north. And then we have our, what do we call it, Michael? Our, I call it
Fund. I've run that one. Don't call it a flush fund.
I call it a slush fund, but I know it's not. But all the years, anything that's locked over at each, each winter cycle, we put into either capital reserve or, or the fund balance. And I think this, it might be something else in the fund now, in the fund balance and this. I can get the capital reserve end of year last year, number two, in three seconds.
Well, he's looking that up. I have a question with regard to the capital reserves. In both cases, you've reduced, oh, in twenty, twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, the, the amount increased. And then twenty-two to twenty-three, it's decreased. So with the expectation of the, of the bonding needed, is there a reason why you're recommending a decrease?
Um, part of the decrease that was in west was last year we paid off a bond for the upgrades to the west. So we upcreased, we increased the capital by like sixty thousand, um, from twenty-five because we took the majority of that bond money and put it in there. We put some things in, some other areas. This year we had to rob the capital a little bit today to keep the rate, to keep the increase down. We robbed, we'll be robbed in five.
Yeah.
So we're still putting in more than we were prior, but we had to rob twenty-five thousand.
And this year is thirty. And this year is thirty.
Yes.
And north, you, you're going from twenty-five to twenty.
Yes, and that's to offset that. And also, um, we finally have a capital improvements program. And capital improvements-wise in north, it's pretty well set. Um, in west, again, it would just be raising the flag to west because it's gonna be major upgrades. And I think it's very important that, um, this potential for live development in west. We're at the point, treatment-wise, where we might be closer to the next step, not fall-wise, but treatment-wise. But if anyone comes down the road with a new permitting and all that, um, you know, we might just have to say, we can't take it anymore. We're in good shape in north. We're only using twelve to fifteen percent of our capacity that we can send to Keen. And like, you know, with all this new development in north, I think that's gonna bump us up to around thirty-five, forty, maybe fifty percent. So we're, we're in good shape in north as far as, well, we can send to Keen, but a lot in this, which is like two hundred eighty thousand. Oh, in good shape there. Again, west is the one that is gonna need some attention coming down the road.
Would the plant upgrade? Do you see the footprint having to get bigger? We're gonna have to buy some land or?
Depends. It depends what type of upgrade we do. If we put in clarifiers, we could probably do it with the same footprint, which I think is, and I'm not an expert on this, but lagoons are, are kind of going out, so to speak. So maybe the look we have, um, clarifiers or some type of special treatment building, you may be keeping these. So again, lagoons are kind of a dying breed. So that part I'm not sure of, but I did get some estimates from, pretty much they're saying it's twenty to twenty-five dollars per gallon every day we fill. We design the plant, our plant is designed for a hundred to sixty thousand gallons a day. So if you do that, it gives you pretty much a ballpark idea of the upgrades and costs. Again, we're still in the early stages of this. We're gonna try and finalize Underwood's report. Right now, Underwood's working on a report, where we are with the plant, where we need to go, and then we'll move forward. finalize the report, which should be the first of the year.
What's that? The West Swansea Capital Reserve for sewer has about two hundred thousand.
How much is it?
About two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, I think.
And then there's a separate, uh, fund for west line extensions that has eighty-seven thousand.
You still have that in here? That, you hiding it from me? What, what is, do you have what north has?
Three fifty-four. That's before whatever went in last year.
Yeah, and then the other part of north is to, when we met with Keen last week, Keen has sent us some bills from upgrades to the Keen plant. We have to pay four point seven percent of that upfront, so there'll be some growth coming along. Out of that, because in the last two years, it's been getting us bills, which isn't a big deal, but we have to pay some of the rest. But we're in good shape in north because it's all laid out. We have Keen's, what Keen's gonna do for the plant. And then we have route removal scheduled and all this for the building, for the two pump stations and all that, so.
You wanna mention that word of wisdom you mentioned to me about anyone came asking about selling or getting rid of the share that we own of, of north?
Oh.
Not that we think that's likely, but.
No, well, just, no one's ever, before I made it with Keen, you know, part of my meeting was to see if they wanted to take over the operations of north. It's just right next to their plant, and all those are their plant, and we have two pump stations there. Me, in my mind, it makes sense depending on what they would charge. And then we just focus on west. But part of the conversation I had with Michael and Joe, who went there, is if, if anyone in Keen ever said, would you like to sell some of your, we will buy back some of your four point seven percent of the plant? Please don't let him do that because we paid that pennies on the dollar compared to now when we've also paid for all the upgrades over the last twenty-something, twenty-five years, thirty, thirty-five years, that's a fine amount of trouble. And so they're a big investment, plus it's a big investment for the whole town. We have two hundred eighty thousand gallons a day. We're using, what are they, thirty-five thousand of it now. And that pump station and everything was designed to take in all of North Swansea, the fairgrounds, the other side of Route Twelve, ten-year side. So the design is there to take in the industrial park office. Everything, even if, even if you put a huge development up on the fairgrounds, we have, we have the capacity to develop North Swansea sewer-wise. I don't know why you're sliding that stuff along. You know, but, um, so my only question, Michael, was just don't ever give up that four point seven percent that we own of the plant. Because you never get it back, don't you? In Keen's quotes, Keen's plant is designed for six million gallons a day, not anywhere near passing. So I'll think, I don't think anyone would ever ask, I'm just thinking down the road years from now. Things get tough and, and.
Someone dangles what seems like a lot of money or?
A lot of money, but it's not worth it. It's absolutely not worth it. And Swansea's interesting.
Good to hear it.
Okay.
Appreciate the words of wisdom.
Hopefully the wisdom can find a food for thought anyway. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay.
So it's all the tough budget questions that Ken has prepared for you?
Sure.
PM or health officer?
Emergency management.
Okay, the only increases were telephone internet, the, um, rate notification system and tools are generated. Everything else stays the same.
And then a decrease in the plan and ground, that was for the
Right.
hazard mitigation.
Yeah, we removed that.
But that's down almost thirteen percent.
Just had a couple of questions. The, the, the salaries, are they being utilized?
Are salaries being utilized?
Yeah, we, this is running through the end of October with a budget of three thousand and seven fifty's been collected.
So what we've done since Pam was gracious enough to become, I think you still consider yourself at least interim director, which was just gonna be a short time in twenty nineteen and then towards COVID and everything else, so she stayed on. So because she does that and help officer and the time that somewhat, a lot of it, especially with COVID, was basically the same time for both. We've just posted all of her time to help officer, so, um, when you'll, you'll see when we get down there. We were over last year, probably come in right around budget this year, but, so we've just been posting all of her time to help officer versus trying to guesstimate what's emergency management, help officer, so. But we left that two thousand, so it was two thousand and two thousand for the stipends. Um, Joe does a thousand and a little bit of leave time. And then, so Pam, who just posted all of her time to, um, help officer, but she is accurately reporting the time she works.
And then with regard to the notification system?
Right.
You, at the end of October, you were at forty-three hundred, rounding up, and you're only asking for another two hundred dollars?
Right, um, according to last invoice, that's about how much they want out.
So you wouldn't end up over budget?
You shouldn't.
Because you're over budget now. Not, not by a lot, but I just want to be sure you've got enough in there.
Well, I think that when we did the budget last year, we didn't know there was gonna be an increase at that time. And we did get an increase, so.
Well, it seems like it's gone up a couple hundred years.
Yeah.
Not major. Not major.
She has a slush fund here herself. She, she definitely has a slush fund. Which she'd use. All right. Health officers?
Um, it, it looks like it's only increased to a hundred and fifty, so.
I think I was just robbing, robbing it off too, so.
No, everything else is the same.
One final, Pam, you're on a roll.
Do the, are you ready to report now?
Yes.
Okay.
Then they gotta copy a beer.
Right. So, um, last year, the officers were mandated to do maintenance reports to the board out. The last year was on first, and this one is not a whole lot different from the last year's. The, the three major concerns were how the property maintenance and communication. Some of them have improved and hopefully, um, then might be some changes coming up that will, uh, help evolve them. Um, as far as housing, um, those five hundred new housing units that have either been approved during planning and several ADUs that have been approved or in the process and I'm not trying to say many of them have been having been approved yet or in the process. As far as property maintenance, we did talk about this last year. We actually have a meeting next week um, to look at our, um, Swansea Health and Building House Standards Annual. I have some checklists from products, open and see how we can incorporate everything, bring it forward. And as far as communication, um, I've really increased how I reach out now to people. And not social media, they're using the message board. I use the post offices, recycling center, that's a big one, the libraries, food stores. Nearly to Lord, so I do a lot of postings there when there's information that needs to share. It was primarily the COVID, um, vaccine clinics that we were hosting. But I also reached out to the SAU and they shared the information with teachers and faculty and the students and the families. And the same, like, we had a COVID clinic in the summer. I was reaching out to town, asking communication, that's improved. I was looking for more hours to reach out to people. Um, just that and.
Do you feel that the new standards that you're gonna be working on to help to address the concerns you have with property maintenance?
I think so.
What, what kind of enforcement?
Um, well, right now it's home health and fire that does, um, inspections. So I think we're just, if our, our manuals or guidelines can be improved or each of the different checklists to see if we've applied them.
Think if, just to help supplement Pam's answer, I think what's kind of stalled this in the past is we start getting too deep down the, and then what, and then what? And I think we just need to kind of get started and be a little bit, not, not loose with kind of, but just need to get started and get integrated and get a sense of how it's working and then kind of see what works, what doesn't. But try, well, okay, then we tell them they need to fix it and they say no, then the person's homeless. How does that? So I think try to work collaboratively, you know, with a, in, informational and collaboratively, I hope that is helpful, Mark, but, um, just gotta get started and start to implement it and see what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, we all share the same concern between, you know, three, four of us, five of us that gotta deal with it. It's just gonna really rely heavily on selectmen's support, which we've always enjoyed and appreciate that. And, um, flexibility of when to go to those houses the rest of the week. Have the rigid plan that a lot of other towns have, it's not all that practical, obviously. If somebody's in Edgewood, we've been in Edgewood. Not worried about that. That's the other place that we know we're worried about and trying to get in there, trying to make the headway we can there. And, uh, I just think, we'll be finally come up to this, we're gonna have one meeting, I think if we only take one meeting, comparing back to you guys what we're hoping to do and just, you know, as long as we get your support, everything will be in good shape.
About all the campers that are popping up?
A lot. Yeah.
I mean, they're living in them.
Huh?
I think they're living in them.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, you know, and I've definitely got a couple of them that are on my board that we're dealing with. Uh, two of them I'm talking to the police with right now. And, uh, it's definitely starting to happen more and more. And, uh, you know, there's a couple of them that I'm worried about now, and they, they, they just don't have access to, legal access to. You don't know, I don't know how hard it is to work to get that, and I'm just wondering if I'm gonna spend on that effort. But I'm hoping that, uh, once the word gets out there that, but there's a lot of landlords that have problem properties. Don't come to town for that reason. That's not what we necessarily want per se. But what, what it really breaks down to is we don't want to be paying for anything that's substandard. Effectively, we're spending taxpayer dollars and we want to get a value for that dollar. Um, and that's the primary goal way off the bat. And then, of course, the answer, the, really get somebody's, either cleaned up and gone would be wonderful.
Anybody have anything else, Ken?
Oh.
Anybody else? Appreciate it. Thanks, Rodney.
Thanks, Pam.
Look, let me knock off, Michael, in five minutes.
Um, Weber Hill Road Engineering, Business B. Um, just moving on to the next phase of that, a lot of the grant funding has been, made its way through the governor and council process and this, uh, next phase of design engineering. They blessed this, uh, agreement, so I'd be looking for the board to award it to Underwood Engineers and authorize me to enter into contract documents to keep the project moving forward.
The whole project grant funded?
Uh, no, it's a, you know, the breakdown, I think, is eighty percent, uh, I don't have those, I don't have those numbers in front of me. It's largely, I think it's about eighty, twenty, eighty federal and state and about twenty local. But I think we've gotten additional grants, so.
Do you think insurance company should step in?
It definitely should, but
Probably.
Probably. I think it's about eighty, twenty, it's a
Any questions on Weber Hill, contract proposal from Underwood? So this would be about sixteen percent of the total cost probably?
Yes, I think that's probably. That'd be great.
Go for it.
Are you done?
Yep. I moved off as Arthur has the expenditure of up to a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in twenty-twenty-two warrant article number five and authorized town administrator to sign contract documents with Underwood Engineers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tomorrow?
Which one?
We'll have it done tomorrow.
Yeah. I had it done today, but I didn't want to send it out four hours before the meeting, so we'll table that for next week. Item C. E, we can just make note, the, uh, October expenditure report got sent out largely consistent with September, no, no drastic changes. Just going to Weber Hill while we're still kind of talking about it, just for update, um, what we're looking at in terms of, um, design, hoping to be completed next summer or into the fall, winter. Bidding early in twenty twenty-four and construction hopefully in twenty twenty-four as well. Take that opportunity for kind of a general schedule update on that.
Do you email the cybersecurity?
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were saying tomorrow. What were you saying for tomorrow?
The Underwood contract?
Oh, I'll get that, get that back to him tomorrow. Uh, no, I did not send out the cybersecurity policy. That was, that's what I was saying I had done this morning, so I'll send that out, um, for you to argue for next week.
Anybody have any questions on the October expenditure report, where we are? We're going some areas, not so good in others.
As long as we know what those areas are and they're, uh, consistent.
Yeah.
Usually, okay.
We probably have thirty seconds.
I hear the bell's tolling.
Do you?
Yeah. They're stopped.
I don't think they quite made it to six. They did? All right, we'll open the public hearing. This, this public hearing is pursuant to RSA forty-one dash fourteen A. It's regarding the proposed donation of tract two identified in the deed for thirty-eight Sullivan Way, which is at map thirty-seven, lot twenty. Uh, the owner wishes to be debt of the town. This is the second public hearing. Public hearing is open. Comments? I think it was pretty well discussed with the last public hearing and also presented the planning board. You all set?
I think our friends might be, uh, coming in, so.
Further comment? Public hearing is closed. Or to continue, is it continued or?
Nope, it's closed and then so I look forward, expect a vote on it next week, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. DeRusso, welcome.
Start reading it at five fifteen minutes.
I I did start about fifteen seconds early, so if there's anything you'd like to, we appreciate the fact that you came.
It sounds like it was approved, it's now going to.
They are, next week the vote on it.
Yeah.
Next week the vote on it.
This was this, this was the second public hearing, which we're required to hold and then next week would be the vote.
Very good.
And we we let the board know that you presented to the planning board last week, so that's been handled as well.
Six o'clock tonight, it's.
Thank you. We we do have some committees that that have some openings that you'd be interested.
I see that.
Maybe later on.
After we put it in the house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, welcome.
Do I have a? Thank you. Let's start with cemetery budget. Pretty straightforward, minimal increase, you know, a lot of it has to do with energy and electric, electricity and the petroleum base, the fertilizer have gone up. But all the other accounts are staying the same.
Are you able to get everything?
What's that?
Are you able to get everything as far as?
Yeah, you know, you'll see here like in the beautification, we didn't do that much, but there is still some work pending on that. And some of it was to deal with just not trying to get contractors. Uh, one of the projects we need to do on the tomb is to uh do some masonry work and make a better entrance to it. And we're hoping to get that done this year, but it just doesn't look like it's going to. We have some tree work that will get done this year, but everything we need uh seems seems to be going pretty well. And like some of the costs and stuff, some of it guessing game, uh but but things seem to be going pretty well since we started fertilizing the uh the grass at the cemeteries. Um, they did look a lot better, the grass is really taken off and they're obviously with the real improvements on old hill. The next year we're going to make improve uh painting the sign, we have to trade the sign, uh but but they're they're in pretty good shape. There's not a lot that needs to be done there at this point. And highway is more of the same, um we're doing pretty good there. Uh, we were pretty fortunate with some grants and coming into, coming under our road contract this year. We were able to do um one of the roads that we were planning on, Arrow Cross was planned for last year. And due to the way things went this year, we were able to get that done, so uh it is going to help for for next year. The big thing once again is the fuel or the cost of some of the materials. The state, we were pretty fortunate this year that we were paying off of the state's contract last year on fuel and the cost was approximately, we were paying two dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon for diesel, which is remarkable where things have been. That ended, I believe, in September. I've been trying to get a price from the state as far as next year's contract, but I was informed they haven't entered into a contract. They're basically staying with the market. Right now, we're paying approximately three dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon for diesel, but we have no idea. They can't really give me any prediction where that is going to go. Uh, so we have been doing pretty well there. I'm going through. We've had to make like an increase, make a change, not so much an increase, but so with the Southwood Justice Street project, we've created a lot more drainage catch stations. It's just going to expand the um catch basin clean come springtime. Uh, but we've been able to make adjustments to that line and it's going to stay essentially the same. We've just broken it down a little bit more.
Where is that, Joe?
Uh, it's under outside labor and rental.
So so with that one, my question on that was just the fact that this year it wasn't really fully utilized?
And the reason that being is a lot of it was um the like the sidewalk project. We didn't, the outside rental of equipment, we were able to basically complete that project significantly less than what was expected. So we didn't have to tap into any of those resources. Uh, the same thing with the uh with the fire pond. Uh, we were able to, we were able to uh complete that project well under, so we didn't get into any of those resources.
You said there's some stuff you're planning to do in the next couple of weeks as well.
Yeah, some of that stuff hasn't come back in yet either. Um, we're trying to get caught up on on brush on the side of of the road and I'm going to use some of that this year. Um, like Matthews Road's priority, Matthews Road really getting somewhat dangerous in places where the brush is overtaking the road. We're doing some of it, but I'm going to use an outside contractor to help get caught up on that. Uh, but the but the main reason, like I said, some of that is still pending, but the main reason we're all the unders is just the way these projects, everything came together perfectly. We're here, we haven't tapped into those spots, uh which is good, I hope it hopefully continues that way.
And with the tree cutting, what would we, would we came in so far below exactly because couldn't get to them or?
The the tree, no, we have still some pending, um we do have some pending, the tree budget is going to be completely used up. Yeah, they just, um, for example, last week we were over on Blake and Goodell. There were a bunch of hazardous pine, there were large scale pines that we just had to, that was, they were very dangerous. So those have been removed now, just waiting for invoices, so some of that is like that. Like the solid budget, uh that hasn't been posted yet, but there's approximately fifty thousand dollars worth of salt that's pending right now. Those invoices are being paid, uh so there'll be a little bit of money left in the solid budget, but but not much.
Did you, did you see new pricing to support maintaining?
Yes, I was fully, so it's been two years that we've come well under each year on solid budget. I was prepared to make a decrease in that this year, but it's gone up thirty dollars. It's gone from seventy, approximately seventy-two dollars a ton to almost a hundred dollars a ton. Yeah, yes, and and everything is like that, everything from cold birds to across the gravel and so forth. Uh, so initially I was thinking we could decrease that, but the with the with the cost, I just hold different position this year, we'll have to see how it goes. We're in really good shape right now, what we have for stock file, but um starting off, we salted a regular three times this year.
And then with regard to the coal patch, you you and Michael are off by ten percent, is what we are looking, so have you all discussed that?
Yeah, that was because he initially filled it out with the arrow press in the uh plan for twenty twenty-three and he ended up being able to pay that this year. So we inserted sap for drive, which was at a lower cost, so it's not a disagreement, just an update.
Yeah, just a portion of sap for drive, not all, but a portion of sap for drive where we did some repairs last year. It really needs to be overlaid and there's there's a potential if one of those housing projects goes forward and they can absorb some of the costs of that, so. So that is the difference there.
Now with your hardback, your over budget this year is, is the twenty-five a good number?
Twenty-five is a good number and actually Michael and I discussed that, it is a good number. Partially why we use so much this year was all of the repairs from flooding, uh but there was also FEMA provided a lot of reimbursement on some of those. Um, so we should be in good shape with that number for next year. I'm not, I'm not looking to raise it, I think we'll be in really good shape. A lot of the dirt roads this year, we put some, I'm not like gravel on them, we don't want that to, um which needs to happen from time to time, but it doesn't need to happen every year. Just over time, just from dust along in the summertime, you lose aggregate off the road and then between heavy rains and so forth. And it took a long time since there has been a lot of maintenance and upgrades to the dirt roads. But all of that, all of that money that we used this year really wasn't for new projects, it was for Commonwealth Road. We should be able to big improvement on East Shore Road, Acton City Hill Road. And unlike I said, we're fortunate to receive some reimbursement from FEMA and we were able to do additional paving that we didn't plan on, like up beyond Railroad and Street we made improvements.
Now we do on Commonwealth Road.
So no progress on the property. It's, it's been no update. I need to reach back out to the people up there and see if they can communicate with those individual and um maybe draft up a letter and send it. But we've done a lot of work up there, we graded the road three times this year. We made a pavement improvement right where the gravel, the asphalt turns to gravel, the road was all busted up and we paved approximately two hundred feet of that approach. We we did a bunch of drainage cleaning of the drainage ditch and we graded the road three times this year. So not we haven't done anything up there, just we haven't widened one section of road that I wanted to. At the, at that top of that hill gets wide and something in the future, I'd be looking to pave five, six hundred feet further up the hill because the hill is definitely challenged for maintenance and it obviously the road is a lot faster than the rest of the road, which is so steep. But overall, the the road, I got had a lot of positive comments this year, just how much more we've done to it, so. Yeah, you know, we can further to get that property on board, which I think if we can get it in here, I think you can decide to go ahead. This is just whole new conversation with that. And I think that that's pretty straightforward and.
Yeah, sand is another one I made and it hasn't been spent significantly, but we've got a really good deal this year on the development project, so. Um, was another one I asked, when we can cut back and I was, I was not a good one to cut back.
We bought sand this year up, we had a tent that we usually paid for it, so it was just one of the most fortunate things we could get in a government. We took as much as we could fit in the shop, usually pay anywhere from ten, twelve dollars a yard for roads and then I think I was paying ten dollars a seven yard load uh for it. So it was very beneficial for contractor. Giving away sand to contractors, but the real good stuff that was roads and they set aside for us, so we agreed on on a total of about eight or nine. We we couldn't fit anymore in our facility, but around the same time we were filling up, the contractor that was doing the excavation sold out to another company and they they stopped, they took the same ground over the lawn for that same reason, so we're fortunate. I think everything else was pretty, pretty well viewed stock and they're pretty good with equipment repairs and um and tools and supplies. Sometimes with the equipment repairs, you just can't predict what what's going, what what and when is going to go wrong. But we really had not, with no major breakdowns this year, apart of the guys at the shop are really good about preventing the maintenance and catching things before it becomes a problem. And we were fortunate through CIP upgraded some of the equipment, uh so we're we're in pretty good shape. And I was approved this year through CIP to buy a six wheel dump truck. I held off part partially because of the supply chain. Even if I ordered one, I'm not going to get it this year, I'll be likely to get it next year. And in the meantime, we've been pursuing actively, pursuing some grants, taking a portion of the truck paid for. Uh, giving you an example, last year, a little bit prior to last year, a year and a half ago, we went to buy one of those six wheel trucks fully outfitted. It would have come in approximately a hundred and seventy thousand, now they're up to as high as two hundred and thirty. Like you just simply can't get them. Uh, so we're trying to pursue some grants and then maybe there's a possibility that the price comes down, but we're in good shape with the trucks. We don't, we order it here short within the next couple of months and then yet it will be in good shape. It's not going to be a setback for us at all, uh but we'll see where it goes and hopefully we get a board and a grant absorbs some of the costs of that to get back down where it should be priced for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
How we doing, Josh?
How's it going? Good, thank you. Morning.
We're ready.
Before I forget, how we doing on the outside lights and how we doing on the street light?
The street light. Um, I didn't really notice the street light again, but the main building lights, Hamlet came by two weeks ago and replaced a controller box and the above the timer for the outside lights and tonight actually we're listening to it, it sounded like it was almost skipping over it. And when Hamlet came, it only repaired one light because the other lights, the valves on them don't work. Um, so now I'm just waiting on uh quote for, for new LED lights to replace those. And it should be good now, but we've got six spotlights up towards the end by the contractors. And uh we're still blocking up the back, so if people can't hurt them, that works completely, so it's in progress.
Is a streetlight, is it a, is it a streetlight, streetlight that's on?
Yeah, it's one right at the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not not quite at the exit, but yeah, there's, it's almost in front of Buckland's house kind of.
Okay, yeah, we can submit their, I think it's their ever source to let them know, so I think they just go up and fix it. So I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that was part of the problem.
Yeah, I didn't even notice that, to be honest.
You gotta go at one o'clock on a Saturday to figure those things out. You're always.
He opens at one AM for you? How did you know?
It's dark.
Well, that's a wrong one.
Yeah, other than that, though, it's in the works and hopefully soon later, so.
Save a lot of electricity if you replace some of the LEDs.
Yeah, it'll be nice to light the side up in the middle where everybody's driving through. All the uh storing window lights work and the glass house lights, house lights work, so it kind of does right now, but still it'd be nice to really move that along.
How about it, Josh?
All right. Um, it's really not a whole lot to it. Uh, major increases were solid waste and cement disposal, and that's due to the contract increase from this year. Um, the other major increase was higher for disposal and that's a combination of vendor uh increased costs and volume we've been getting. Um, so with that, twenty-four hundred, that's pretty much exactly two loads and we've got probably three quarters of a load right now, so that'll get us early spring. We'll send it out and then probably send it out again before tire amnesty again, then we should be offsetted to the year of those, so.
Is your budget for next year, given that it's lower than where you're at right now?
Yeah, that was an increase for you, yeah.
I'm saying, is twenty-three's budget number adequate since you're over that number?
Oh, yes, yeah, I have a plan for it and I have the three quarters, so it's kind of just filtering into it with that, so. Um, and some of the minor increases were recyclable disposals and that's due to fiber markets starting to drop out, which I knew would eventually happen, but the mixed paper, I think someone's taking the biggest sip right now. Even then, it's only fifteen dollars a ton charge as of now, probably still will drop some more, but fibers like uh cardboard's in the whole steady for the most part. Um, plastics shouldn't take too big with it and scrap metal pretty much stays constant, so I think we just got really lucky passing here and after two years of the market, so. But to go with that, how we're separating stuff out, we're going to be getting more for what we're shipping, so we're gonna offset it a little at the same point. Uh, instead of sending half loads of just one plastic, we're shipping just full loads of that plastic, so we're gonna get the higher end of the market value for it. Um, and right now we're sitting on probably a full load of each plastics and aluminum just because of where the markets are right now and the end of the year, so they kind of change everything up. So probably February I'll be able to ship it out and get a better pricing than I would be ordering right now, so. Got a, got a few things lined up to offset some of the markets and uh tough sides of markets too. Um, and then a minor increase was department supplies that Mike and I talked about the other day of five hundred dollars and that's just to go with the trend of going over about five hundred dollars the past two years, so. Um, and that's due to just being a catch all of one item, so.
Do you think that would, just looking at your your history, would it be better at either thirty-five or four thousand? Just because you were, you know, you were basically year end for twenty twenty-one, you were at where you are at the end of October this year.
Yeah.
So it would seem like you'd want to get closer to four thousand.
Not that it's a big number, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have savings on your other line items to kind of buy things at the end of the year?
That's what I think this year, yeah, and that's kind of why it's so high up right now. Um, yeah, there.
Bumps that, that artificially bumps that line.
Yeah.
Because there's things he can.
I think that five hundred.
I would stock right here.
And I I usually go through and try to bulk buy as much as I can. Um, I bought two thousand pairs of vinyl gloves last year and it lasted, all of them for the last week, so. Um, and usually the items that we do get, we get consistently, so I just buy a whole year's worth, try to knock it all out. Um, and Nick and I were actually working on a breakdown of simple stuff like even spraying come up trees through the years, see if we can get a case of it, two cases of grease, even little stuff like that, just in an essay that's here and there, so. Um, and a big contributor to the, also to the department supplies this year was all the outside lights, um horn traps, horn poison, all that kind of stuff sprayed cans. So that was probably at least four hundred bucks worth of just stuff for horns and dealing with all them, so. And that'll be another thing, we'll just bulk buying the traps out over the next year instead of break one, they're starting to come out, so we're gonna get a head start on that and then get all the traps I can reuse, I just did the inserts for them. So we're gonna get a head start on that and then get all the traps I can reuse, I just did the inserts for them now, so. That was another drive for that.
Do you guess people have any suggestions, Kazoo? I think the idea of moving it away was, was a good idea, but then it's like Russian roulette, trying to get there and dump your dance.
Yeah, and I think I found one of the nests conveniently when I was trimming a tree branch by the burn pits, I cut into it and they came out of the tree, so. I was able to plug that up and just pull a glue in there and try to find where they were coming, it was at an underground mess and they've been perving up into it, so. I took care of that with Bobcat, but so there's gotta be another nest somewhere, so I'm keeping my eye on it. And I think trimming all the trees along the front gate area kind of gives it an open area where we can see if there's any SSI or anything over there. But I didn't see anything going through, so it's a mystery. But we're, we're gonna get the traps out earlier to try and nip it before it even gets to what it did this year, so.
There were some angry, angry voices.
A bit crazy. Luckily, I never got stuck, I don't know.
Especially when you found that one with the chainsaw on.
Yeah. So there was just one major decrease, and that was equipment rental, and that went down.
I'm sorry, Jessica, Jessica, gosh, equipment, what was the last word?
Equipment rental.
Rentals, okay, thank you.
Um, because hopefully we won't have to worry about getting kids here rentals here. But the game plan we've been working on between Nick and I and some of the guys in the glass house, Charlie, John, we're gonna separate out the smaller deposits, the fifteen centers like the building and the boughs. We're just gonna do a shit of ones every year or two, so. We're literally gonna be renting all once a year at that volume. We're basically just trying to hit the easier ones to get and fifteen cents a pound, fifteen bucks, it'll add up pretty quick, so. Little things like that, we're gonna try and up the revenue stream for it. And little things we've been doing to try and divert some waste from the C and D and the MSW labeled the dip-ins. So we've got clean wood, compost, porcelain all lined up now, so. It's, if somebody's got it, even planted instead of throwing it into the compactor, they can toss in the bin there. Anything two by fours or stuff like that, instead of tossing it right into the compactor, they can put it in a designated bin and make it easier than dragging it back or having to go up to the tiffin, so that'll help out. And also scrap metal sorting, we've been sorting out different grades to not only save on hauls for the metal disposal, but also to get a higher revenue stream for those as well. And that's electric motors, we've been getting gas iron, number one, number two, copper and yellow brass. So we've been sorting out different grades now and I think we really want to see a big bump in revenue for that, so. It's a, it's a little thing for us to improve on and things, but yeah, no questions.
What do you think, you're gonna make on, you're gonna start charging for burn pit?
Yes, we've done. Just contractors, yes.
Right, but you know how many you get every year, so.
Yeah, we've already done a hundred and sixty dollars on compost loads and then I believe two hundred on brush already since October. So I expect once we hit the springtime, we'll get all the contractors coming through, it's early on. Add some extra revenue, but also deter people from, from a plume. So it'll save both ways, it'll save labor and we'll make.
And you have to pay disposal on the action, huh?
No, no, I've been using that as just for walls and burn pit and nothing hazardous, and so we don't have to test it, so.
The masks required?
I just changed that.
Did you change it to something or just remove it?
Uh, blue permits required now. So I put a nice.
Blue permits, stickers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have one?
I didn't know, I didn't know what color they were.
Oh, yeah, I just barely got them like a month ago, so I'm still lying.
Keep an eye out for him, Josh.
I should have talked to number two, three and four.
What color are they, were they previous green?
Green, yeah. So this will basically just make it easier to be able to track on people who have moved their, moved a keen and still coming here to drop frame of stuff, so. I think a lot of.
So where do we pick those up to, is that a town hall or is that from you?
Both, town hall for us. And I gave town hall, I believe, five hundred stickers and they said they're gonna work. They're asking people, neighbors, sort of vehicles that they want a sticker right there, so I think that's gonna cut out a lot of cluster for us on Saturdays and people want stickers or something like that, so I think that would be beneficial.
So is there, just planning for next year, an opportunity to use that sign to encourage people to rinse their bottles and cans? Because that may help with, with the washes.
Yeah, yeah, and I keep saying this, if I want to get a little town hall to board, it'll provide the aluminum just for postings and stuff like that to. Anything, whether it's a closure date or something coming up, a town meeting or something like that, so that'd probably be where I would post it.
Well, the gentleman behind you designs and builds very good signs for, outstanding ones.
I might need one of those.
Probably still has the template.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
You got your bucket?
Yes, yep, eighty-five hours on it already. Had it since twenty second.
And it's everything you know.
Yeah, yeah, very good, very good. Set up a making schedule for it and done the, we've gone to the main, good safety and making schedule on that end, so just kind of. Went to the stuff and little thing, the absurdenge, stuff and all that, but it's still three hundred pounds over our one, so it's worked out very well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Thanks, Josh.
Government or home renovation, town hall renovation, station renovation, West Swansea Fire Station renovation. Cool Land Board, Richardson Park renovation. The other thing before, a lot of jobs is done, but it's really important. We give support to Anne Porter, through the, through the, kind of loss committee meeting and things like that. It's been phenomenal for years. Anne kind of comes in and folks in, she does a lot of work, but by far her greatest ally and Andy works a lot of hours with her that nobody even knows about. He does an amazing job, so you guys already know that, but that's extra that we should know. So things up, maybe how we're doing well, moving along. Alice, I think, is with us on Zoom, maybe another board member, two, a board director meeting member, she might be with us too. Moving along pretty much the way we figured they would. She's overwhelmingly popular, but she's put it out of space quickly, that'd be awesome if she would. So I've got these two drawings here, I've got the full size plan and I've got the expanded plan. I didn't even put the yellow ones because this is the barn, it's not the area that we're considering here. Where's this from? It's in the barn, yeah. So, you know, when I, when we were working with the committee for all those, those weeks and months and other people, there's not a single person that ever walked through this building once and said, jeez, you know, we really could use more walls. We all know that the walls would really hold it, hold it back, you know? And so we were kind of going back and forth. Alice has spent a tremendous amount of time kind of trying to figure things out, especially with the state and licensing, you know, what would work best? The calculations for staffing, everything's very difficult to work through. And what we're looking at doing is, is removing the walls that are pink here, okay? These, these are in the new area, quote unquote, new area, between the barn and the main house. And the reason we're going for those largely is because it's a, manufacturer trust is above that, those walls are the next one in the day. So if we get them gone here, you can say I put in some light duty posts to try to stick with her theme. Nature theme, I'll probably just harvest a couple of beech trees or something off my property and put them in there to kind of guss you up a little bit. We're gonna go super, super low tech, I'm gonna save the sheet rock, some of the sheet rock that we demoed on, but some of it, and what we'll do is we'll case the open with that sheet rock and use a bull nose final corn bead. So no trim, nothing like that, no sharp edges, it'll be smooth, it'll look good. And functionally, it leaves a smaller dent than child. So that's, that's kind of a good spot that we got going on there. Right now, she's at a really good point for the space that she's got, but unfortunately, she's also at a break even point. We had been given probably more, more reason to believe that we're gonna get a grant done. We're gonna get them where we actually got. They decided they're gonna take the grant and they were gonna break it into smaller pieces to spread it among more people, which was fine, but it was smaller pieces. So right now, she's sitting at a break even point. And we were hoping that we could get some help from the town for the twenty seven hundred dollars. That Mahopen is gonna take care of the removal of the electricity in those walls, we want it done. That's really the only real cross on list. I met up there with my preferred electrician for this, he's going to do it in that timeframe with almost no notice, he's really happy about that. In this case, it'd be Ben, Ben Prescott, local guy, ex-pair. And Ben's also gonna help me with the town hall, has been helping me with the town hall. And Josh, Danny and others have been working on the water station, so trying to spread it out amongst, amongst our people and leave them apart. But that's kind of where we are right now, is, is we could use, use a little help to get that part of it done. She's put a ton of money into putting paint on the lead and capsizing lead, a little bit more of that than what we thought there'd be. And she's spent a lot of hours, a lot of time doing that, a lot of volunteers, she's put in some doorways, half doors to keep kids from going places that we don't want kids to go in the rest. Put a lot of time and energy into it. Did a great job cleaning it out, getting rid of really what was our stuff. And Josh was also, once again, Josh again, all we had to do was ask him. And the volunteers showed up on the weekend and said they're coming down, they're looking, could you help, you know, just make sure they don't get too much of a hassle? And Josh was like, oh, make sure, you know, they get hassled, we'll help them load it, we'll take right care of them. And can't beat them, so I got good partners, every one of them. And the twenty seven hundred is for the electrical. Sure, the electrical works, we're estimating, what we're hoping right now, I asked, I asked Alice to run some numbers because, you know, it's all great. So with the additional capacity right there, and I like what she's doing here, she's got a thing, she's calling new practical enrollment versus overall capacity. So she's basically saying, look, you know, I know what I could have, which is forty-five, you know, going for thirty-eight, so there'd be an increase of eleven children. With that increase of eleven children, when she could get into that space, she'd be bumping up between fifty-seven hundred, between ninety percent and a hundred percent of that, of that number. She'd be bumping up almost six thousand dollars or the lower six thousand dollars, depending on how it pans out. That would be. What is the six thousand? Would be the increase in, in. Revenue, right? Yeah. So that would come from eleven, so. Yeah, that would be. Per day, per week? That would be weekly, uh, let's see, two, no, uh, weekly, it's not specifically Carol. It was a month, a month, that would be per month, she'd be dealing in six thousand a month, which would be pretty monumental at this point. It would, I, I think when we finally settle in on our monthly rent, when it comes time for the new lease, it's gonna be quite a bit more than what we thought it was gonna be when we restarted this and we're all over it, we're over it and then I'll do it again. It's gonna be more. You said the needs out there. So, yeah, the needs definitely out there, so her numbers are really cool, so the, she's, she's got, she's got almost the majority Swansea kids now. And she's got, and then when you add in the three, four, five businesses that parents don't live in Swansea but work at in Swansea, and her willingness is overwhelming the majority of Swansea, she knows the desire to give preference to Swansea, so she has been giving that preference to Swansea. So it's, it's, it's doing its job, I mean, it's, you know, it's actually got more Swansea people in it than, than, you know, when we had the girl from home going, certainly towards the end. And that's been great, she's been able to keep, keep track of her own. We've got a bunch of little ones popping up to try to help with EVA. The man is just so weird, I mean, people call her up almost in tears, sometimes in tears begging and pleading. She can't take what she can take, right now, the constraint that the state puts on, and I'm not saying it's weird or it's bad, it's just what it is. The constraint that they put on these daycares depending on the age of the child is really ours. And babies, you don't, you can't even make many babies, it's one for, one staff, four of them. And it was up incrementally, but very gradually. So you get, you know, you can't exactly have people coming back daily, I don't know, the number's not working. I'm gonna have to go home. So you just try to keep the nut staff, the little lights, we're just to keep it going. So in this, in this request, this is twenty seven hundred for electrical, and the rest of the work. Rest of the work we're gonna take care of, the board will take care of, and now we'll, we'll, we'll get the rest of it done. We just really need that, the electrical work. This is that little bedroom that had like a little metal fuse box or something? Yes. Yeah, yep. It was really kind of a hanky. It was a pretty hanky setup. Yeah.
A lot of angles to that wall.
Yeah, but it got us our sixteenth room, we tried to maximize it that time in history. I'm just saying, you have the same point of building itself, that old garage could be covered up. Yeah, unfortunately, the twenty seven years we're gonna cover that, all we're doing is just. Yeah, we have that room. Well, you guys could eventually get it all up, yeah, yeah. It's something, it's something we need to look at. We're in that now. Right now, the, well, because right now, the goal is, is, so this is the real kicker here. So part of the, the whole dilemma, this whole progress has been is, of course, is, you know, we're trying to fix the Ferris wheel, it was actually operational. She was already running, she moved right in, she kept running, and she needs to keep running. We've got a week between Christmas and New Year where she's gonna close, and we gotta get everything done that week. And that includes the space that's already there that needs, you clean that repainted, the furniture, all that good stuff that you gotta do in a place like this. Inventory, art supplies, all that good stuff. So we're just trying to open it up, make it so that we can get them okay through licensing, we can get the new children in there. And then, yeah, we'd love to make that another phase project. I think, I think Alice has recognized, I know I've recognized, and it was a big topic at the last board meeting last Wednesday, actually, was we've gotta do a lot more way out ahead planning on this stuff, so that I'm not here, we, we need to do something, that's just, that's not a sustainable way to go about, right? So, you know, I'm, I'm learning how to be a landlord, you're learning how to be business people and. Is the fuse box still there? Yeah, it's, it's. Is it this time? You know, it's, it's, it's there, it's right through the corner. The nice thing about, about it is, it's less rare, but the nice thing about it is probably, I don't know how many number you're supposed to, doesn't matter. But it was sometime while Judy was there, I had kind of finally had enough of it all. And we hired an electrician to go in and chase everything. So every outlet, every switch, every everything's got a label on it of where it originates. So we can at least do things a little more efficiently than we used to do. So we should be able to redo that at some point, some way, depending on what it actually operates. So we're allowed to operate with a fuse, fuse panel? Oh, yeah, it's up to lock it, I mean, it's. Yeah, oh, sure. Wait, you just still, you just still use that, but two, as you all, it was always the center, not the electrician? It's really a superior assessment, I wish I'd have remembered that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yours wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do remember Jerry Melson saying the same thing, yours is.
Yeah, it's really the best, it's really the best system.
It's coming, isn't it?
Still isn't, where's it coming from?
Twenty twenty-two budget?
Was it on yours?
It was not, I didn't have it on, but it will be, should be.
Twenty seven enough? We hope so. As we can, I mean, like I said, it went up there with it, we're gonna, we'll be doing some extra ton weight stuff in the rest of it, then that's, that's good. Feeling pretty good, I mean, fair odds chances. There's gonna be a fair amount of wall that's still gonna be left above what we open up. So maybe we're gonna do some exposed junk, you know, junk spines, we'll keep it, we'll cover them, and we'll just tie some stuff off that way or something. We're not gonna get carried away with it, we just wanna make it safe and accessible. I'm trying not to, I don't want to think into the zoom if I can operate with the sprinklers, the emergency lighting and then having that, that popper. and then having that, that popper, I just don't wanna hide it, not that you can.
One spot where we have to take out the closet, we'll have to do something anyway, but that's just life. I knew it. Sure it's enough.
No.
Should, should it be more than three thousand?
Yeah, doors are okay, and the doors are okay, and the ramp and all that, I mean, is anything else?
Oh, there's stuff that we're gonna have to do in the future, but again, according to the, to the, to the lease, you know, she's done the provide that stuff, we gotta sit down and look at all that. This is, I'm just trying to get this, this one done for now, we really, we, we gotta get better, you know, when you guys have the more, the more apprehensive and better listed, and how we're gonna work forward, and hoping that this starts to afford that, A financially, and B fills up more space, and she can really see what's gonna happen. It, it's been set up probably two, three different times, differently than what we originally thought of it, this first year, we thought it was gonna be again, but it's just the nature of working in a, in that, that building and learning as you go. And um, yeah, so let's say three thousand, we'll call it good.
I was gonna say, three.
I appreciate the help I do.
I'm sure.
Congratulations, fine.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank the board, it sounds like they're
They're, they're fantastic, board, they really are, they have a very, very good people who are already on other boards and have a lot of work, I don't know, they're helping with the help.
Forty-six weeks, so next Christmas, probably.
Yep, exactly.
Start planning now.
Well, it was funny, the other night, you, we were talking about, you know, what, what budget you wanted to run on all the rest of that stuff, and she was gonna go June, July, and I was like, you know, you're gonna have to come here, and that means you're gonna do this budget thing twice, and that's, we know what you wanna do, so we're gonna be on, on course with you guys. All right, nice night.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
See you tomorrow night, camera man.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, Mike.
Your expenditures.
So we had talked about when we did the third quarter financial analysis, but we looked like we're in pretty good shape, so trying to be proactive for things that aren't, you know, planned somewhere or in a budget for next year, or things that are, and then we can subtract. So I solicited from departments, um, the list that you see before you is what I received back. Um, so obviously I don't have the three thousand on there, but that's not, you know, hugely material. Um, obviously the first, the first item was a hundred and ten thousand towards the addition, um, on West Station, which I believe the shell is completed over there, so made good progress. Fortunately, if we waited another week, I think we would've been in trouble, but um, it came through, so that's another, another success for Mike, even though he's beat himself up way, he doesn't see it that way, but um, so anyway, but so it took that hundred and ten thousand off the three thirty-five that um we projected, so that gets us to around two twenty-five. I think there's a reasonable case for really everything other than the last few um vehicles, I just think, you know, get to something of that magnitude, I think, probably should just keep it in the rotation like we have it. Um.
Uh, Melissa in chat wanted to say thank you, we truly appreciate it, of course, she left on the chair, I think.
Alice, got it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's creative spelling, so, great, thanks, Josh. So I can either go item by item if you want, um, or not, but um, like I said, either these items, couple of them are not currently, uh, they currently don't have a pot like the new voting booths, could be something we put in, in next year's budget, but
Why do we need the voting booths?
Um, combination of
We need a new configuration, how people get to the booths, but why do we need the booths?
Just the age and condition, uh, these ones are, be easier to set up, might be easier to store. Um, it's not necessarily a have to, it's just something we've looked at. Um, the old ones are pretty tired, but we can keep using them. Something that Joe and Heather were working on as an option, and they are expensive, no doubt about it. Um, but I think the main thing is be easier to set up. Um, I think the other ones are getting kinda rusty, and they're just, it's gonna be something comes out sooner or later, so, not, not an urgent has to be this year, it's just something that they've been talking about, and put it forward. And a couple of others, like, you know, mobile data terminals for the PD, those are like the laptops and the cruisers, those are in the CIP plan, but they hadn't been in the past, so that was kinda one of the bigger um increase items. So if we purchase them this way, we've done radios at the end of the year sometimes, so it just kinda helps um create, uh, avoid the need to create a significant increase in one of the line items, so. But again, or we could do, we have to do any of it, really, so it's up to you. But um, we had asked for this list, so that was what we came back with.
You'd pay for the capital, maybe go maybe minimize the taxes.
So that's what it would do if we don't spend it, is it just goes to the unbalance? Yeah, so.
So that would uh that would mean we'd have roughly fifty, fifty or sixty thousand from the original three thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Since we'd already spent a hundred and ten.
Right.
Full total without vehicles is one forty-eight, so it's looking like seventy-four. All I'm saying is if we, we spent a hundred and ten out of a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and seventy, let's say, so it would leave us with sixty.
Didn't say that part, a hundred and ten out of what?
We had three thirty-five.
Right.
We spent a hundred and ten of it.
Right.
And if Sly wanted half of the three thirty-five
Oh, half of the three thirty-five, okay.
Reduce the tax rate, it would leave us with about, about fifty or sixty thousand. What, what effect would that have on the tax rate?
Hundred and fifty thousand tax rate? Can you run that number while you discuss? I'll do it, I'll go ahead.
The two, the two V's are pretty much taken care of through the CIP plan, so. So if we included the three thousand, we have about seventy-five, so we're spending a hundred and eighty-five or thereabouts, three thirty-five, which would still leave a hundred and fifty, that's what you're calculating.
Hundred and fifty, that is a hundred and forty. Fifty is twenty-four cents tax rate.
It's not significant. It's probably gonna kind of find I'm just thinking that if we're looking at six cents, it increases the operating budget for next year. If we take out the data terminal, and we take out the, the HERS tools, cause those are already calculated in the CIP, we'll end up with roughly the rest of these items plus the three thousand, some number close to one hundred and fifty. Maybe with a mechanical compression device, is that a CPR kind?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't wanna do anything like that until we decide on EMS report.
Yep, makes sense.
We could probably bump that SCBA fuel station up a little bit if, in order to get a better one used.
Yeah, considering what they go for in new, I thought that
Right.
The chief did good work on getting that used quote, and it's in a closed one versus the current one, which if something goes wrong when it's getting filled, I guess, can explode, and sounds like a, sounds like a good, good purchase, and obviously used ones. That's better. Cheaper than new, so better than nothing. So it sounds like take out the mobile data terminals, compression device, HERS tools, and the cars, right?
Cars and add in the
And add in the three thousand.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, would you be able to like take out the
Mobile
There's a screw. Thank you.
Mobile data terminals.
Don't be sad, I've got it now.
Uh, four down from the top or so, replace four mobile data terminals. No problem. Uh, mechanical compression device.
Yeah.
Hydraulic HERS tools.
Yeah.
And then the two cars at the front.
The last one?
The car, the two cars, the fire and police cars.
Oh, both of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five items?
Yes.
Two now.
Yeah, and add in the three thousand for the Carpenter Home renovations. Sounds good to me.
SCBA fuel station, maybe?
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. You okay with that, Ken?
This is two hundred and sixty-five.
And that's it?
About the level.
Reasonable solution, thank you.
New business?
Covered most of it.
Any non-publics?
That's it.
Oh, wow, wow.
You got a bunch of minutes done sealed there, what's that?
I see a nice ad in the paper.
PD?
Yeah.
Good.
Is it working?
Not yet. I think it was, I think that was a removal of one, it was awesome. And it was, uh, got a few different publications, so.
She retired?
Who? Depends, uh, depends if she moves in with her mom or not, but not, she doesn't have a Maybe had a moment of passion working on the new financial software. No, two, two to four years, two to something in that range.
So it's not imminent. No, it's not imminent, we Did everybody log on and see the paycheck?
He's got his right here.
Care that up, it's gonna be getting quite chronic.
Well, for his dead body.
Oh, my dead body. But the, the print's getting smaller and smaller.
It's okay, the bankers, the bankers, yeah, it's okay, the bankers can read it.
Anybody online have any hands raised, Josh?
Everybody online.
Thank you. Second. And then, aye.
Aye.
See you next week. God, the amount is getting smaller.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Beth.
Always be Ben's advocate, right?
Yeah, they